Good morning, everyone. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I am the Chair of this committee and I am joined today by Councilmembers Reich, Bender, Johnson, Yang, Worsami, Goodman, and Palmy Sano, and do expect others to come out shortly. But we are quorum of the committee and can do the business of the council. And we have two items for discussion today on our Committee of the Whole agenda. And the first item relates to information technology. So I am going to turn the chair over to our Chair of our Information Technology Subcommittee, Councilmember Andrew Johnson. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Hi, everyone. Today, we have with us Otto Dahl, our CIO for the city, to discuss the Open Data Policy Working Group. We actually had a resolution creating this back during the budgeting process that Councilmember Glidden put forward, and we are due for a progress report. So with that, Mr. Dahl.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, as well as committee members. I'd like to start the discussion on the open data efforts by sort of giving a brief overview of the way the world is today. I mean, where are we starting from? Your city actually makes use of approximately 76 trillion characters of information in its day-in-and-day-out operation. There are over 400 information systems that make use of that data. And needless to say, the city does put out a fair amount of that information in various ways articulated, if you will, visualized at different levels. And you can see this through examples like we put out, for instance, we measure over 1,200 metrics through the Results Minneapolis process and all of the charts and data from that process actually exists out on the city's website in report format, all the way through to actually having worked with various other charts and information that various city departments have put out there, to working with vendors like recently the police department, working with Bear Analytics, put out information that is used in a smartphone app called Raids Online that allows folks to zero in on their area of the city and what crime or incidences are occurring in various parts of the city. And then finally, there are times where we just literally issue data out to request doors because there is a process in the city, a public access procedure that was formulated in a procedure process, and that policy was adopted in February of 2004, which directs departments to consider data that isn't specifically marked as non-public. We obviously have the Minnesota Data Practices Act. There are various federal rules and regs and laws, things like the HIPAA rules for health information, CGIS has rules for law enforcement information, et cetera. If it isn't specifically excluded from the public view, then the direction is for city departments, if requested, to make that information available as soon as possible to the requester. We are in a position, I think, today with trying to provide more information more readily and sort of put information out there before somebody actually asks for it. And so what we did was formulate a working group, which has on it Councilmember Andrew Johnson, as well as myself, the city coordinator, the city's chief data architect, who's on my staff, and we have representatives from police, public works, regulatory services, health services. And we have, in essence, two people from outside of city government. We have Bill Bushy from eDemocracy. He's their technology coordinator. And we have Kristin Murray from KIRA, which is the Center for Urban and Regional Affairs, to give us viewpoints from not only the hacking world, but just in general, from folks that are trying to, if you will, work within the civic technology arena that's popped up, not only in Minneapolis, but around the country. We held a meeting where we started to dive into ultimately the decision points that we need to consider in any policy that would deal with open data. There's obviously many different aspects, and we most definitely don't want to create a policy that gives either false impressions of what we're going to do or actually makes positions the city where it can't successfully achieve what we're doing. And so, for instance, one question that we need to answer is, when we say "data," what exactly are we talking about? There's a whole lot of information that is captured electronically. We capture noise levels in the city. We capture, you know, data from forms that people fill out or go online and fill out, and seemingly everything in between. We capture data from other types of sensors around the city that we may deploy. Some of our vehicles emit location information, which is captured through GPS technologies. And so there's a lot of different types of data, not only from its source, but also the type of information. We capture video. We capture still images. It's just not physical data that people are typically dealing with, i.e., the written word, but we capture various other types of data as well. And so what of all of this really is going to apply to any policy is something that we have to decide. The group also needs to decide, is there any sort of conditioning of this information that needs to be done in order to make it consumable by others? Unfortunately, a lot of our information is in various sorts of IT technologies that drives the information to really be unusable unless you are very attuned to the technologies that make use of it. For instance, there's a technology that's commonly used, not just by us, but everyone. You might hear it, relational database. And what that is, is putting, in essence, information in tables and then relating tables to one another. That sort of relation also has to be understood by anybody that looks at that data separately. Or you can do a process, what we call is flattening that information, to make it much more consumable. And that's one of the challenges that we're going to have to face, is just how much do we change, ensuring that we're not actually changing, if you will, the value of the information, but rather making it consumable by others. We also have to determine things like, do we just show information as we're currently using it? Are we going to hold on to and give a historical perspective at all times? That 97 terabytes of information that we have today, that 97 trillion characters, next year, we'll probably add a lot more to that. It's going to increase. And so how much do we maintain out there of that data? That's obviously, for instance, part of what's going to drive the ultimate cost to the city of doing this. Just to replicate all that information is a fair chunk of change. And most definitely, like I said, it's going to grow so that that commitment is going to grow over time, as it does for us to just manage the data for the applications that use it within the city today. And I think a really important aspect that the committee is looking at is, what sort of information about data do we also put out there in the public's view so that they can understand what they're looking at? And so that hopefully, they can make use of that information. In the field, we call that metadata, if you run across that in the literature. That metadata is something that can be, at times, you will find it to be very minimal or it can be very extensive. Obviously, I would like to be able to say that all of the city's data has great metadata associated with it, and all I would need to do is to sort of replicate all that documentation, but unfortunately, that is not the case. Some information is well-defined, others, we're going to have to work to get that information, again, in machine-readable form and put it out for folks. So we're working on sort of what the, or we'll have to work on, what is the minimal metadata that we want to put out there so that people have the best chance of truly understanding what they're looking at? And as I mentioned before, one of the challenges that metadata has is where there are relationships that need to be kept, that need to be understood between information, how information is collected, the degree of correctness of information. Sometimes, we have incomplete information. Sometimes, we may have information that was collected at different points in time. A good example that I can use from the private sector that I'm sure we probably all have experienced, if you go out to some mapping system, whether it's Google or Bing or anyone else's, a lot of people, if they look at their neighborhood like a satellite view, will find that, gee, my neighbor put in a pool and it's not showing. Well, obviously, that part of the country was flown over potentially many years ago. It's not readily understood. It's not like those services actually put the date there so that you know when they flew over that area. And so, you know, there are intricacies like that in information, and that's part of what you can put in metadata so that people understand, you know, what are you looking at, how potentially complete, what's, if you will, the level of integrity of information that actually is being looked at or and/or used by someone, I think is a very important set of information that we need to ensure is actually made publicly aware when we put data out there. Another good example, not that I'm trying to belabor this point, but I think it's something that people recognize, we've all looked at survey data of one type or another for something. And when you're looking at survey data, depending on how it was collected, might influence your opinion on that information, good, bad, or indifferent, or how you might be able to use it and may not be able to use it. So for instance, when we did the digital inclusion survey that we've done for the last three years in the city, when we put out all that data and we put out all the actual survey information that comes back in its raw form, we also described what the survey process was. And we described the statistical processes that we use to interpret the information that we have displayed in a more aggregated manner, so that people understand how we dealt with that information. And I think that's really necessary for anybody to truly have a good understanding of how they might use that survey data for whatever purposes they choose to use it for. And so I think we have that situation many times over with city information. We're going to have to take that into account in what we ask of ultimately the departments and the IT department, and what we ultimately make available to the public. These are not insurmountable tasks. We obviously have to know this information ourselves internally to make use of it. It's known. It may not necessarily, as I mentioned before, be in a nice document that literally we can just make available, but it can be collected, and it really boils down to what direction do we give departments as the minimum amount of information, minimum amount of metadata that they should include with any information that they deliver. And so with that, the committee is scheduled to meet many times because ultimately, we understand there's probably going to be some fiscal impact on the city, and we'd like to strive to actually be able to plug in anything that might be required into the budget process, which is currently underway. So we'd really like to try to establish the process, or excuse me, the policy, at least from a draft standpoint by June, so that any ramifications budgetarily can actually be included in the budget process itself. So that's our goal at this point. It also will help us understand, you know, our staffing requirements, particularly on my side, in support of the committee's work in establishing this effort. Again, there's many, many different things out there. There's a number of examples of cities and municipalities, states, and others who have gone down this path before us, maybe in a more extensive manner that we can learn from. And so we've also been trying to assimilate lessons learned from others so that the committee has that as part of their input. Needless to say, I think at the end of the day, this is not a simple thing. I mean, sure, I could turn around and take the 97 terabytes, make a copy of it, and put it out there. Unfortunately, I don't think the public, whether, you know, other than maybe some members of the hacking community who have the skills to interpret and understand that world, we're going to have to, if you will, condition the information. We're going to have to supply data about the data to make it usable by a wider range of folks. And with that, I would be more than happy to ask, answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Are there any questions from councilmembers? I'm not seeing any at this time, so thank you so much. You've been very thoughtful in considering all the different angles of this. It really is amazing, once we think about how many different places a policy like this would touch, including things like our procurement process around software, and making sure that we're including language when we're going out and getting new software, that it provides easy paths to getting that data out there for the public. Actually, I'd just like to share a story, especially with my colleague, Councilmember Reich, about this. It's a fun one, from St. Paul, actually, because we had all of the snow recently melting, as everyone knows, and there were puddles forming in the streets, and a lot of the storm drains were clogged up. And what St. Paul did is they made the exact locations of those storm drains available, and they just put that data out there. And somebody came up with a tool, I believe it was actually MinPost, came up with a tool for members of the community to actually go out, identify where their storm drains were on their block, and they were able to go out and hammer out that ice and get that ice out of there and allow their streets to drain. And so this is a great example of data which you might typically not think of as highly requested. I'm sure our Public Works Department doesn't get a lot of requests around the location of storm drains, but by putting that information out there, it did add a lot of public value, ultimately at really no cost to the city. Somebody else was able to go and create and make this tool and ultimately help the situation for drivers out there. So there's a lot of great examples of what's going on with open data, and I think a lot of us in our conversations around this topic have recognized all the value it could bring to our city in terms of really empowering individuals to continue doing good work out there. So with that, I will move to receive and file, I guess. Do we do that on this? No, we don't actually have a report, so. With that, I will turn the chair back over to Councilmember Glidden. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to Mr. Dahl for that report and to Councilmember Johnson for helping lead us through that conversation. We now move to item number two on our agenda. This is an item where we are planning to take some action. This is our City Minneapolis Goals, and it is actually a vision, values, goals, and strategic directions that are before us for our, hopefully for our approval today. This has been through Committee of the Whole multiple times at this point, and I really want to thank all of my colleagues, as well as our staff, who have been facilitating this process for your full participation and helping to get these goals to this stage. I don't think that staff was intending on any particular presentation, but they are here if there are questions that you have for our staff. I also want to note that attached to this item on the online agenda is the full public comment record. This includes not just comments that were emailed to the council to be included as part of the public record, but also several meeting summaries that were taken, including from multiple ward meetings throughout the city, and then a bit of analysis that was provided by our staff of the variety of comments to just help in working through that. So I just wanted to note that we have a stack that's, I don't know, about an inch thick, maybe, of public comments, and thank you to all who helped facilitate the process for getting those comments and then organizing them for review by the public and by us. Councilmember Gordon had a question or comment?
Just a quick question. On the agenda, it says revised goals and strategic directions, and I'm wondering if there's actually been any changes between this and the one we saw previously. I couldn't identify any changes.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Strobel to come up because my understanding was there were some slight grammatical changes that were made, and maybe you want to just yourself make that comment, make sure that I am correct in saying that, and point that to us, but I think these were extremely minimal, like some corrections, not an actual word change of any substance. But, Mr. Strobel, maybe you can help us understand that.
Chair Glidden? Councilmember Gordon, that's correct. Between the last version that you previously saw at Committee of the Whole and the version that you see before you today, there's some very minor adjustments related to grammar, nothing to the heart or the core of the vision, values, and goals and strategic directions.
Do you know what they are? Can you point them out for us? If not, I could maybe find out later.
Right, and if someone else from your staff does know, that would be great.
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, they were probably about a dozen, very small in some cases, changing verb tenses. They were relatively minor in nature, and we'd be happy to, you know, provide details of those later, if desired.
Okay. Again, kind of more grammatical corrections to make sure that the document read properly. It is a long document. If you read through, many strategic directions, and so thank you for making those corrections. And thank you, Councilmember Gordon, for noting that. I don't know if you have any further follow-up?
No, but I would appreciate just seeing them. We're used to seeing things that get marked up when there's like changes from the last draft, so we can find them, and it's hard to identify them, so it would just be a little bit helpful, and then we can see how excellent and smart those changes were.
Okay. Thank you, and that is appreciated. So the other thing I just wanted to note for councilmembers is that I have passed out two documents that are staff directions that would relate to implementation and kind of next steps from adoption of the goals. We've had several presentations from staff that articulate how these goals may affect our work and the work of our departments moving forward. They will be incorporated into business planning, which is about to take place. They will impact the budget process. We have also had some discussion about a process where we may identify some select strategic directions to have a more involved stakeholder process developing work plans. And I do have one staff direction that relates to one item around that. But I think it's interesting that a lot of the discussion that has happened from the public has been around process, has been around how do these goals become part of your work in a way that truly impacts how the city operates, and how do we follow that progress? How do we stay in tune? How do we measure? How do we see that there are results or not results? And then how do we retool and move forward? So I think those are all really good questions and important questions for us as we try to think about how our city culture may be able to move the city goals forward. So I think what I might do, just for ease, is I might read through and talk about the two related staff directions. One, I would intend to move today. One is maybe just not quite fully baked, and I wanted to introduce it for discussion, but we may not move it today. And then we, I think we would vote then separately on approving the vision, values, and goals and strategic directions, and then on the staff, related staff direction. So if that sounds all right with folks. And I will just go ahead and read through the staff direction, since those who are listening today have not seen a copy of it attached to the agenda, and it will be after this meeting. But the related staff direction, and again, I want to thank the city coordinators' office for helping to work on the wording of some of these items because they are significant in directing how we're going to follow through and keep track of our progress. The motion is to direct staff and the city coordinator to, one, develop measures for Minneapolis's adopted values, goals, and strategic directions, and report at least annually to the Committee of the Whole or other appropriate reporting committee on goal progress. Item two is to annually review and, if necessary, propose revised strategic directions to the city council and mayor. Item three is to seek stakeholder and community perspective on measures to be developed for values, goals, and strategic directions. Item four is to seek stakeholder and community perspective on progress made on strategic directions as reported at least annually. Item five is to provide support to the city council, mayor, and department heads in developing a definition for the value equity and other key terms as necessary. Item number six is to provide support, together with the city clerk and relevant department heads, to council committees and their chairs to develop committee work plans which may be periodically refreshed. And item number seven is to propose options for creation of a racial equity action plan, utilizing as examples the city's climate action plan and other city plan documents that sets a baseline for measurement, includes goals and timelines, references existing city policies and programs that support the goals, recommends new policies and programs for consideration, and is developed in cooperation with a range of engaged stakeholders, with a report to Committee of the Whole in three cycles with a proposed process for developing a racial equity action plan. And I'll just speak to that last item for just one brief moment, and I know Councilmember Canno is in line for a question or comment, but clearly, from our discussion, the concept and value of equity and discussions about racial equity really and value of equity and discussions about racial equity really rose to the top in the year leading up to this, as well as in our planning process around the strategic goals. And while this specific language may be a little bit new this year about racial equity, I would say that in the last three goal-setting processes that I have been part of in the city, there has been at least one goal or strategic direction that was somewhat similar to this. And so it has been a goal of ours before and I think too, it has been one of those enterprise affecting goals that has been very difficult to grab a hold of and identify how it affects our work. And so I think in particular, because of the heightened attention and concern about working productively on this goal and knowing that in the past, this has been difficult to figure out how to drive the work, I think that working on a racial equity action plan is something that will put us in a productive direction. So I just wanted to make those brief comments on that one since that is something that has not been discussed in previous Committee of the Wholes while many of the other items on this list have been. Councilmember Canno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And actually, I was going to ask, are you also going to discuss the second?
Yep.
The second handout? I will wait for my comments till after that.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure, thank you. And then I wanted to note, I have another staff direction that I have printed off separately. And the reason for that is that I think this may be one that we may want to hold for a little bit further discussion with staff and with the Mayor's Office before we vote on this, but I also, knowing that this has been a little bit of a discussion that is starting to come forward, I wanted to put it in the public sphere that we have some discussion about this and there may be a variety of opinions on this item. But this direction was to direct staff from the City Coordinator, Neighborhood and Community Relations, and other key departments with support from the Mayor and City Council to review options for creating staffing and supporting an equity commission, including defining a scope of work and commission membership options and report on proposals to the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee. And I know Mr. Styles, the Mayor's Chief of Staff, is here. I'm not sure if there is a particular item he wanted to comment on, but I just wanted to note that he has joined us. And just so I could make a brief comment on this, I don't put this suggestion out in front of us lightly because I do know that, I think one of the worst things we can do is establish a board or a commission that we haven't fully thought through how it would operate, how it would be staffed, how it would be resourced, and what would be its scope of work. And those are all very critical items that need significant thought and input from a variety of stakeholders inside the city and perhaps some outside as well. But I do want to note again that working on this value of equity, working on issues of race equity is something that there is a lot of attention and momentum and engagement in right now. And I say that not just from the perspective of a small group of engaged stakeholders, but there is actually a very large group of engaged stakeholders on this issue, including some of our major foundations who have issued reports, including, I'll just say, also the Star Tribune, which has had numerous editorials on its opinion page about this issue and urging action even in just the last year, I think, multiple editorials. And many of our other jurisdictional partners that are identifying this as a priority issue, including the parks and the schools, which both sent a contingent to the recent Governing for Racial Equity Conference that I attended in conjunction with the Mayor that I just returned from yesterday. So I say that just to again note for folks, there is high interest in this area, there is high interest in ensuring that there's productive work on this area, it is not spinning our wheels kind of work, but I do also recognize this is a significant step that requires conversation and thoughtful movement forward. Thank you. We do have comments from a couple of councilmembers. One is Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate your explanation because as sitting in front of me, I completely object. I need to have answers to the questions of, is this like the Civil Rights Commission, like the Charter Commission? That brings it to, are there people who are going to serve in the public? Is there going to be an open appointments process? How is this going to work? I can, I support your effort on item number seven, to create a racial equity action plan because I think the example of the Climate Action Plan is a really good one. There wasn't a Climate Action Commission. So was that because that work wasn't as important as this work or some people have determined it wasn't as important as this work? I just feel like you've handled it really well by kind of tossing it out there and trying to get people's feedback without trying to push it forward today. The way I see this, it's like making promises we can't keep, telling people we can do things we can't do, and then creating a commission to back that up. I need to know exactly how this would work and what makes it equal to something as important as the Civil Rights Commission or the Charter Commission for that matter. And if there is some sort of basis for that and there's some sort of funding mechanism for that, I'm open to it, but I just don't think that there's enough information. So I think it's great that you suggested upfront that this is something that needs more discussion because that was my initial reaction.
Okay. And I think rather than responding to questions, since there are lots of folks in queue, I wanted to just make sure people can get their comments out there. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to echo what Councilmember Goodman just said and I also wanted to point out that in regards to this proposed staff direction, it says that the report on the proposals would be referred to the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee and I just feel like that doesn't seem to be, with all due respect to Councilmember Gordon, I mean, I just feel like that's not the appropriate committee. And I say that because the racial equity toolkit will be passing through the Public Safety Committee and it just seems appropriate that if ever this were to come through, I mean, the appropriate committee would be the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Canno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'm really excited to have us have this public discussion and to engage with this issue because we have heard about this need for so long from so many different people and I'm really excited to be able to have this discussion out in the public and hold us accountable to this community demand. So a few things. I think this really positions us as a city of Minneapolis to be a national leader on this subject. I think a lot of times, we go to Portland and Seattle and these other cities and states to try to learn about these issues, but Minnesota has a strong history of leading on these issues and we obviously have the challenge that we need to rise up to because of the racial disparities and how deep they are in Minneapolis. So I really want us to look at this as really a challenge that we can own and as a model that we can really build on and be a shining example for other cities across the nation to really solve these issues and an opportunity to engage our local experts. We have so many great community organizers, we have so many racial justice professors and experts, we have so many people that have written about this issue that we really have all the assets locally to make this a reality. Secondly, in response to some of the questions about the racial equity action plan and comparing it to the Climate Action Plan, we do have CAC, the Citizens Environmental Advisory Committee, which is a complementary arm to some of the work that the Climate Action Plan did. So proposing a racial equity commission, and I would ask us to think about, you know, adding that to the title, would really complement the work of the racial equity action plan and could perhaps even anchor it. Now, I just wanted to share an experience that I had while I worked for Councilmember Robert Lilligren when he was serving as Vice President. I was able to help work with Neighborhood and Community Relations Department to establish or revamp the Latino Advisory Committee, which we renamed the Latino Engagement Task Force. And learning from that example, I really would like to share that it's really important to allow the folks who come and be a part of that table to shape the actual process and the meaningfulness of that body for themselves because again, I think we have so much knowledge, I think we have so much expertise in our community members, people from Organizing Apprenticeship Project, people from Nexus Community Partners, people from the Metropolitan Alliance for Sustainability, that a lot of these folks aren't new to these processes, they're not new to these conversations, so they can really help define what these boards, what this particular board or commission could do and how, and make it more relevant for them and make it more meaningful for everyone involved. With that, I do remember having a conversation this last weekend with some folks who mentioned that it would be nice to align some of these districts, depending on how we end up appointing people or how people end up applying, to just have them more in line with some of the geographies or boundaries we already have as a council because then there's more alignment between people who represent an area and other commissioners who are a part of other boards or bodies of work groups in the city because then there was an expression of just inability to keep track of all these lines and all these wards and all these districts. And so as we look at developing this commission and as we continue to answer some of the questions that have been posed out there, I would encourage us to really look at some of the geographic alignment that we can have between these groups so that we can better coordinate with one another and communicate with one another about priorities and about the future work of this commission. So thank you, Councilmember Glynn, for allowing us to have this conversation.
Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, I have been here a long time and lived through, I think Councilmember Canno just probably got into what's going to be the hardest thing, who's going to be on the commission. And I wish you luck because that's going to be defining community. I remember when we did the, I think it was Community Mediation, Public Safety was the committee that that came through and we had a public safety logjam about who was the community and people argued about it, you know? So, good luck. The other thing I want to say, I just, I find a little bit frustrating, and I've shared it with Councilmember Glynn already, there is so much time and so much expertise, as Councilmember Canno said, looking at this issue and it's a problem that we all recognize in our community. The foundations have done tremendous research about what the issues are. And my concern, I want to get a price tag for what we're talking about here because my concern is that we will spend a significant amount of city dollars to, you know, start, staff, participate in a commission. Is it a commission that lasts forever? Is it a, is it a, is it a commission that lasts forever? I just, I don't know that.
I did not put that.
Okay.
Right.
Well, whatever. I mean, I think, I really want to know what the dollars are because I do know that we have strategies, we have identified strategies. And there are so many reports and information and experts and everybody knows what the problem is. So what is this commission going to do? Is it going to make suggestions? I mean, to me, if we're going to spend $200,000 on a commission, I'd rather see us hire 1,000 more step-up interns. We know that works. We know that works. Urban scholars, getting young people into the city, into our enterprise to use the skills that they've learned in college and then be, have connections so that they can find their first job. That works. So we can either spend our money on creating something here that is, in my view, perhaps duplicative, although I don't have the details, so I'll wait and see, or we can support things that actually work. This morning, I was in front of the Rotary Club, downtown Rotary Club, and actually in my bio, it talks about teen pregnancy, that I'm really proud of the work that I've done on teen pregnancy. And they asked, what have you done about teen pregnancy? And I said, well, you know, we support, city supports the Visiting Nurses Association, going into teen parents' homes to support them, to help them stay in school, to make sure that they try, so that, so that they don't have another baby, that kind of thing. And you know what? We've reduced the teen pregnancy rate and at the bottom of all these disparities is a teen parent. Thank you. Let's put some more money into that instead of talking again about what the problems are. So I just, I'm anxious to see what, how this would be structured. I support the initiative because I think it is, it is such a challenge for our city. But I do think we have things that work and I don't know that another commission is going to give us what we want. I think we should be supporting the things that we know and we do as a city to influence the changes that we need to see.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much and I appreciate this discussion. I know we'll have opportunity maybe to discuss the other staff directions or the goals and the values, but I appreciate that we're drilling down on this idea right now. I'm actually very supportive of it. It makes sense to me. Not that I disagree with anything that Council President was saying in terms of solutions that we think are working and should work, we could move forward. But I do think that this is an incredibly complex problem. I don't think we have the answers and the solutions. I guess if we had them, I think we'd be further along in terms of closing some of these disparities. I also think having some kind of a body that includes other expertise at the table directly there to advise us on this will improve our credibility with the community and with others. And I think really, it's so much work to figure out how we're going to address the issues of inequity that having, and I think there are people eager out there with expertise and with passion about this subject, but having them at the table actually helping us craft the solutions would be significant. And it doesn't seem that unusual from other things we've done. I know that it is an expense, but I know that we, when we decided to tackle youth violence, we were willing to establish a youth violence committee to look at that and help us draft the action plan. And then after that, we decided, well, let's keep it going in some form, so we also have somebody to help, a group to help oversee implementation of that plan. It's been a great asset, I think, to the city and it's brought us forward and I see that this could work in very much the same way. I recognize that we might not have the right staff direction there. I'll tell you honestly though, I'd be willing to direct the City Coordinator to start work on it right now. So I'm comfortable, I would be comfortable voting on this today, but I also understand that it's complicated. I do want to note clearly that I don't necessarily think it has to come to the Health, Energy, and Community Engagement Committee or only come through that committee. I can see Councilmember Yang's point. Public Safety and Civil Rights might also be a good committee for it to come to so we can work on some of those details. And I would love to be part of helping to figure out even how we can craft the staff direction to tee up the deeper discussion about who serves on it, how are they appointed, how long does it last, what is its purpose? I would appreciate being part of that discussion.
Excuse me. Thank you. Councilmember Canno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Undoubtedly, definitely, I would like to echo Council President's comments about the budgetary concerns. There is no doubt that this work will not move forward without money. No doubt. So I do fully expect a robust discussion with the Mayor's Office and with other councilmembers about the type of investment and the quality of investment we're going to make to make sure that this work moves forward. There is a direct correlation between solving issues and investing time, resources, and staff to it. Every research report that has been produced to address these issues will definitely tell you that we need to invest robustly in these efforts. And secondly, in terms of what committee this could be housed under, you know, I do get a little worried about putting too much work into civil rights and public safety. We have a lot of issues to resolve there with obviously improving police relationships with the community and ensuring that the Civil Rights Department becomes a department that we can all really be proud of. And that's in light of all the difficult conversations we're having right now about that reemployment. So I don't want to, I don't want to be Pollyanna-ish about that particular subject. So I would ask colleagues to consider, you know, the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee as one that it can report to simply because I do feel the public safety has some serious issues that we need to deliver on as a city and it worries me to sort of heavy the burden on that particular committee. But I'd be happy to continue conversations and continue to explore a model that will make this racial equity commission successful, as well as the Public Safety and Civil Rights Committee successful with the work that it has to do with its various commissions and departments that it has to. departments that it has to oversee.
So I just want to note, we have three more council members in queue, and then we might want to kind of hold the conversation on this. It's clear that there's a range of opinions here, and some very good points that I'm not surprised that have been made, that I just want to say thank you to everyone, but we might want to just think about, this is not a conversation that is going to end today, clearly, and that was the point of saying this is not intended for a vote today, but the way that we have conversation is in public, and so, again, this was to put this idea out there, since it is an idea that I know is in the public sphere. Council President Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just, I asked Mr. Glynn, I was trying to remember, the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department in the commission is working on a program that they have in place, a blueprint for equity, and I'm just wondering how that would fit into their work, how that would fit into this action, the work that they have done and continue to do.
When you say that, are you referring to?
Seven.
Item number seven?
Yeah.
Yep. So, and I might just have a response on that. Just knowing the work that went into the Climate Action Plan, the Climate Action Plan very specifically refers to existing work that is happening in the city. And so I would identify that work as something existing that is happening in the city, that we want to figure out how that is acknowledged and is part of the strategy that is more fully defined as part of an action plan. But again, the Climate Action Plan wasn't all about new things to do. It was about collecting in one place many things that are ongoing, policies, programs, and work that we want to ensure retain effectiveness going forward. So, thank you for that, Council President Johnson. Councilmember Worsami?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I welcome this suggestion. However, we're talking about a racial, I mean, Equity Commission or Equity Committee? And also, what about the cost? As you may be aware, you know, I represent one of the poorest wards in our city. And what we, when we speak to our constituents, what we hear is, there's a need for mentorship programs, vocational training programs, jobs development programs, entrepreneurial development programs, and we don't have any resources for that. And yet, what we're talking about is putting more resources on commissions and committees to discuss the problems that some of us have already highlighted through our campaigns, and through forums, and through discussions, and through the fact that in Cedar Riverside, the median income is $14,400. And yet, nobody wants to tackle the issue, which is, there's a lot of youth in those areas that don't have opportunities to develop their skills and to get the jobs that are out there. So I would rather have another 1,000 or 2,000 step-up programs to get youth into programs and training, rather than another commission or another committee to discuss some obvious issues that we have. So are we talking about a committee, or are we talking about a commission? And where are we going to get the money and the funding for this new commission? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just really want to say thanks to you for bringing this forward to the committee. I think we need to be open to new ideas, and one of the things here that I don't want to be lost on our fellow council members is the fact that this idea actually came from the community, that we met on Friday with Organizing Apprenticeship Project, who brought together over 20 different organizations within the community that are working on racial equity issues, and this was one of the ideas that directly came from that meeting. So we have a lot of folks out there that are doing the groundwork, that are doing the hard work, that are engaged, that know these ideas, a lot of incredibly talented folks within our community that are advancing racial equity every single day. And they brought this idea forward and said they would like to see the city take this on. And I think that is absolutely critical to acknowledge here, and really emphasize that this is an idea directly from the community, directly from leaders within the community advancing this. They think that this is something that would be helpful, and I am absolutely supportive of the concept, look forward to developing it out as well with colleagues, and want to thank them for all the work that they do in bringing this forward, and would encourage other organizations and other leaders within the community to bring forward ideas. If you see things that the city can be doing better, and you have positive ideas to bring forward, please do it. My office is always open to that. I know the same is true for quite a number of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, and Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to briefly voice support for the first staff direction, and in my mind, the second staff direction may kind of grow out of some of the steps that are in the first one, which is to do a robust stakeholder engagement process, to come up with some specific steps to achieve the equity-related goals. And I think this is a fantastic way forward to make sure that we're working efficiently and effectively here to support equity in our city. And so it seems to me that some of the stakeholder engagement that happens through this process might lead to either this commission, as stated here preliminarily, or another model of engaging people in this really important conversation.
And one last comment by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, you know, a quick note on the Equity Commission piece. If I can get clarification on this, I mean, part of me just kind of has this sneaking suspicion that the Equity Commission is a response to our racial equity toolkit, and if that's the case, I mean, part of me just feels like, you know, we're moving a little bit ahead of ourselves with this piece. So, I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Thank you. And so what I'd like to do right now is go ahead and make the motion on adopting the city's vision, values, and goals, and before I do that, again, I'll just say, I knew that there would be discussion, I didn't know if there would be quite this much discussion, but thank you again to my colleagues. Again, I will say that I am fully aware that commissions are not something that you just put together quickly, and that they can be established in, you know, a short amount of time. It takes a lot of thought. I will say that the dollar figures mentioned by Council President Johnson, I've never heard of supporting a commission, but we do need to be very aware of resource issues and other sorts of things, as we would think about, is this an appropriate idea for carrying the work forward? And I appreciate also, Councilmember Bender's note that some of the processes that are put in place, or would be put into place, with the staff direction that includes the work around the goals, and the suggested Racial Equity Action Plan may lead to other steps to come that may or may not include an Equity Committee or Commission. So, thank you again to my colleagues. So I will go ahead and, I think I will make this as two separate motions. I will move first approval of the vision, values, and goals and strategic directions, and again, thank our staff from the city coordinator's office, all the department heads that participated with us, and others from those departments, as well as community members for engaging with us, the policymakers and the mayor, in creating these proposed vision, values, and goals. Discussion on that motion. Councilmember Gordon?
Well, thank you very much, and I just wanted to alert everybody that I'm going to resist the temptation to start inserting words, or adding, or making any kind of changes, but I'll admit, I have been tempted. I think we've come up with something here that's pretty powerful, and I think that we can hopefully all find some hook in these values and these directions for the great work that we want to do over the next four years. I want to call out a difference that I see is important in this set, as opposed to in previous years. I think we've elevated values about how we work to a different level and a higher point. And this is something that I heard talking to community members about, that they were most concerned about, is how we do the work. It was almost, there was a faith and a confidence that we're going to have goals they can relate to, we're going to cover the important things that we should be working on, but they want to see, how are we going to do that work, and how are we going to be effective, creative, and especially engage and collaborate? Those are in there. It's right on page one, we can look at those, and hopefully, the community can help hold us accountable, and we can drill down more as we work ahead in the months with our plans and budgets, and clarify how we're going to do that. I think that is significant. Although I'm not going to make any motions to add words, I'm going to mention a couple, because I think there's, that I wish was called out in here, and I just want to highlight that I think there's a focus in an area, areas that we're going to work on that are in here, because we talk about all people, and we talk about everyone, but I know there's some of us on the council that are very concerned about youth, and we're going to, that's going to be a priority, and we're going to be focusing on that. And I'm sorry that we didn't really call that out, maybe, in our goals, that we want to make sure that the city works for our young, we want to invest in that, we've heard about it, we've certainly heard about it in the mayor's race, and I think one of the priorities that she's put is early childhood in particular, but I serve on the Youth Coordinating Board, I serve on the Youth Violence Prevention Executive Committee, and those are issues we really have to work on for the success of our city. And I also think, we talk about, and we're going to be focusing a lot on seniors in the years ahead, and that's not specifically called out, but we see our population changing, we see there's enormous value for our older residents, keeping them in the city, taking advantage of that, and I think that's definitely going to be a focus of our work. And so I wanted to at least note those here with all of you verbally, if we're not actually having that called out specifically in this document, and I'm sure that it will in the other documents that will follow and flow from this.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, on approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we have approved our values, goals, and strategic directions. I would like then to turn to the staff direction with the seven items that have been read aloud, and I will move approval of that staff direction, and ask if there's any discussion on it. Councilmember Gordon?
So, at the risk of monopolizing too much of this conversation, I did want to just call out, because I didn't want to before, number seven here that talks about the Racial Equity Action Plan. I think this is a significant step that we're taking. I think it's an outgrowth, maybe, of the toolkit that we've been working on, and an outgrowth of all the work that we've done on these goals, and I really appreciate Councilmember Glynn for bringing that forward. I like the model of the Climate Action Plan, too. We certainly did establish a steering committee to do that, we reviewed other documents. In many ways, I think this will tie in and strengthen the work that got started, and was actually struggling a little bit, I think, with the Neighborhood Community Engagement Commission, with their Equity Action Plan that they were working on, too. So I think it's going to be a good match, it can fold right in there, and I look forward to being part of that and broadening that work.
Councilmember Reich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, insofar as that this is a direction for certain departments, you know, resources and activities, just in the planning phase, I just want to get a, how much consultation have we had with them in developing these actions? So a point of information.
Yes, so I don't know if Mr. Struble, you wanted to have any comment? Councilmember Reich was asking about consultation with the coordinator's office, and I'll just say that there has been some, quite a bit of back and forth with the coordinator's office on these staff directions, some of which, not all of which, but I'll say some of which, the coordinator's office was already anticipating and planning on, and thinking that these would be a good way to, again, ensure that our work stays alive in front of the council and moves forward well. So I don't know if you have other remarks, or Councilmember Reich, if you have more particular questions for Mr. Strubble?
I think that satisfies my question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, on approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? And that's direction, staff direction is approved. So, thank you very much to my colleagues. And with that, we are done with our two discussion items, and we'll move on to reports of committees, and the first is the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee. With that, Chair, Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are 10 items on our agenda for approval tomorrow. Item number one is a bond issuance for the Cameron Building. Item number two has to do with amendments to our rental license dwelling ordinances requiring licensees to hold, to go to certain meetings. Item number three is a tenant notification of environmental contamination, very similar to what happened with the lead ordinance. Item number four are the liquor business and gambling license applications. Number five is business license operating conditions for a taxi cab license. Six is moving forward with our partnership with the Consortium of Community Developers and African Development Center on their small business loan programs. Item number seven is probably the most notable item on the agenda. This is approving the designation of Ryan Companies as the exclusive, for exclusive development rights on the Block One Liner parcel and air rights proposal. This is not a final contract, it's simply moving to negotiate with them as the sole developer. Item number eight is accepting Met Council and LCDA grant awards. Nine is a report on our small business revolving loan programs. And 10 is approving the money that was authorized in the budget, $300,000, going to St. Stephen's Human Services to work on street outreach programs. With that, I'm happy to answer questions on 1 through 10.
Questions for Councilmember Gordon, is that a new question, or is that an old one?
It's a new question on number seven. So I noticed that there was some discussion, or at least in the report, about the labor peace agreement, and this is with the Ryan Development. Is that something that could get renegotiated back in then, when we develop this development agreement, or have we already agreed, or maybe state law prohibits us from even putting it in?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, we don't have the ability to put a labor peace agreement in, we will not be owning the property, we're selling the property, but we are concerned about the hotel development, working with organized labor on a labor peace agreement. This is for the hotel operations, it's not for the construction. So we really have no authority, but we wanted to make sure the developer knew that this is something we had a concern about, thus, the staff direction that I authored.
Well, I appreciate you calling it out there and emphasizing that, and hopefully we'll see it follow through on Ryan's end.
I would think so, Councilmember Gordon, but we didn't want to ignore it, but we didn't want to exceed our ability to have authority in this area either.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have, I don't see any other questions. Next, we have Elections and Rules. With that, Chair, Councilmember Frye. Is there a report?
I apologize, Councilmember Glynn. Could you come back to me in about one second here?
Yes. So next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement. With that, Committee's Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee has brought five items forward for approval. The first is approval of the Commissioner of Health reappointment of Gretchen Musicant. The second is appointments to the Public Health Advisory Committee. The third is authorizing a five-year agreement with the University of Minnesota to provide medical rotation site through the school-based clinic program. The fourth is a resolution supporting participation in Earth Hour, which is March 29, 8:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. And the fifth is a application for a grant to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and I'll be moving the Ways and Means recommendation in the report there, which is a higher amount, because we realized more funds were available after it passed through our committee. And I can take any questions.
Excuse me. Thank you. I'm not seeing any questions. Councilmember Frye, did you want to proceed?
Yes, thank you. The first item from the agenda was simply listening to the clerk, our clerk, Casey Carl, give the rundown on the previous reports. It was a receive and file. The second was adopting the present election judges and additionally giving them the power to get more election judges if need be. And then the third was clarifying the definition of tabulation center, and directing staff to find a reasonable definition. And then the fourth was just simply revamping the method, or directing staff to come up with a strategy to revamp the method by which we eliminate candidates as they drop off the ballot.
All right. Thank you for that report. I'm not seeing any questions. Next, we have Intergovernmental Relations, and I will give that report, and our one item is to approve an amendment to the 2014 Minneapolis federal agenda, and that is adding language in the Policy Initiative section regarding federal role in affordable and workforce housing. And I'm not seeing questions on that. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management. With that, Committee's Chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items. The two items are, one, to approve the reappointment of John Friedel for two years, and two is to approve the re- to approve the reappointment of Verma Corwell for two years.
All right. Thank you. I'm not seeing questions on that. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works. With that, Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We forward, we'll be forwarding 16 items to the full committee on Friday. Item one regards the City Engineer Director of Public Works reappointment. Item two is the Boulevard Vegetation Ordinance Changes. Item three is the Fourth Avenue South Street Resurfacing Project. Item four is the Hay Northwest Franklin Hall Lynn Park Area Street Resurfacing Project. Item five is the LaSalle Avenue Street Resurfacing Project, that's from Grand Street 10th, 12th Street South. Item six is LaSalle Avenue Street Reconstruction Project. Item seven is the Penn Avenue Street Reconstruction Project Phase One Contract Amendment. Item eight is the St. Anthony Bridge Parkway Bridge over the BNSF North Town Yard, series of action related to that project. The following items, item nine is the Tomco II Lease Agreement. 10 through 16 are items that we refer to Reports of Ways and Means Committee. Item 10, Penn Avenue South Phase Two Street Reconstruction Project. Item 11 is Riverside Extension Street Reconstruction Project. Item 12 is the Fifth Street North, Eighth Avenue North, and Fifth Avenue North. 48th Street East, which is MinDOT 62 Frontage Road South Street Resurfacing Project. Item 13 is the Lorian Avenue North South Loop Area Street Resurfacing Project. Item 14 is the 2014 Parkway Paving and Parkway Street Lighting Improvement Agreement. Item 15 is the Street Construction Assessment Reductions. And item 16 are a few low bids that we will be accepting upon approval. I forward these reconstruction items in their long list as a sign of spring to come.
All right. Not seeing questions on that. Next, we have Ways and Means. With that, Chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There are 11 items that Ways and Means will be bringing forward on Friday. The first is a legal settlement. There were two items related to Target Center renovation project, including a project labor agreement and authorizing an RFP for construction manager at Risk Services, and then a bid, accepting a low bid for Target Center domestic water supply and sanitary drain pipe replacements. The fourth item is an appointment to Minneapolis Television Network Board appointments. There are four, Nancy Brown, Seth Goodlickson, George Norman, Luanda Whitmore, and extending the appointment term for Catherine Bishop of the Merrill Appointment. There were four items related to the IT issue, including the Compass Financial System Upgrade, contract compliance software, solid waste information system, and AmeriCorps Community Technology Empowerment Project, known as CTEP, and then accepting a gift of Cisco Systems for video conferencing equipment. And the 11th item is the most significant, is the passage of a resolution amending the 2014 appropriation resolution, allocating 2013 funds, several operating departments, as outlined in the resolution, or, yeah, the resolution, commonly referred to as our rollover process, consistent with the rollover criteria and rewarding great financial management within the departments to keep doing the great work. That is the report.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing questions. And the last report is zoning and planning. With that, committee's chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three items to forward this cycle, as well as two items that require no action that I just want to highlight for folks. The first item is regarding 1111-18 University Avenue Northeast to grant the appeal notwithstanding staff recommendation regarding three variances for signs at a McDonald's. The second item is just amending language related to 515 on the park easements. The third item is for on-premise roof signs, zoning code text amendment. And then the two items that require no action, one is, we just approved withdrawal of an application to increase burning at the HERC facility downtown, and I know that's an issue that was important to a lot of people here, so I wanted to make sure you knew that that happened. And then we continued an item after about two hours of public testimony related to the interim ordinance for a moratorium in Linden Hills Fulton Armitage Kenny and Lynn Hurst, and those, that public hearing will continue at the April 3 zoning and planning meeting.
All right. And we have a question or a comment from Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Chair Glidden. With regard to the variance that was, they were seeking for the McDonald's on the 1100 block of University, we have had some discussions, both with the owners of McDonald's, as well as the community, and there's potential for a resolution, and therefore I will be moving on Friday just for an extension of one cycle, so for two weeks, so that we can have the meeting and hopefully reach an agreement.
All right. Thank you for that. Finally, we have an announcement, which is that after Friday's meeting of the full city council, we will adjourn to room 315 to consider the following matters, City of Minneapolis versus CenterPoint, Jerry's Enterprises Inc. versus CenterPoint, and State Farm versus CenterPoint. And with that, I believe we have concluded with our business for today. I'm not seeing any indication otherwise, so we are adjourned. Thank you.